Good evening, everybody. We're here for the Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting for April 15, 2012 at 6:00 PM. Can we please stand and for the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Supervisor File?
Here.
Clerk Newbeck here. Trustee Hayward?
Here.
Trustee Morocco?
Here.
Trustee Alamothu?
Here.
Trustee Tetter?
Here.
And Treasurer Brown is absent this evening. We have a quorum.
Excellent. Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Board.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nope. Okay. Public and Board announcements. Again, this is just to talk about anything that you want to talk about from a presentation standpoint. If you do come up, I need you to come up, give your name, address, and make it short and to the point, hopefully. Does anybody in the audience have anything? Okay, we got a few people. So is this, this is just like an announcement, not like anything else, like you're going to say, hey, we've got a birthday party coming up and it's going to be great. Okay, it's not about more of a topics, just to keep it clear. Okay, it's because there's another section that you would, it would fall under if you wanted to voice your opinion about something. So let me ask the question again. Is there anyone that wants to make a public announcement? Yes. Okay, please come up, state your name. And address, too, please.
My name is Ryan Miller and I live at 4810 Crestview Drive in Clarkston, Michigan, 4348. I just wanted to bring you guys a thank you note, just to say thank you. I called out here to you guys to see if you guys would pick up some garbage that was over. They had dumped it at Esten and Clarkston Road. It's sat there for 10 months, so I thought I would just bring you guys a thank you letter and drop that off for you guys.
Excellent. Yeah, please.
Thank you.
You like that, Mel? Thank you.
Did you call the DPW? Okay, great.
Glad to hear it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Nope. Just online? I'm going to go to the board. Does anybody on the board have an announcement?
Just a recurring announcement until May 8 comes and goes. We have the Garden Gala coming up at the, be at the Brady Lodge from 6 until 8. There's also a VIP reception opportunity that begins at 5. All information may be found by going to ClarkstonRotary.org, ClarkstonRotary.org. At the top of the page, there is a banner for the Garden Gala. There you'll find an opportunity to either purchase tickets, to VIP the general reception, or you can purchase tables as well. And we hope to have everyone's support. 100% of the proceeds will go to benefit the community garden and support of our township.
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone else? No? I have one. I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate Lisa Christensen for her appointment to the Director of Parks, Recs, and Seniors. Lisa actually started her career over 20 years ago. It was her first job out of college was here. She has gone through numerous supervisors and boards and directors and still here, so we greatly appreciate it. Not only that, but she's also a resident, so not only does she engage on it on a professional level, but also on a social level. So from that standpoint, I think it's a promotion well deserved. I believe firmly that you should do a job before you get it, and you've been doing it for the last six months, seven months. I think you've been doing an outstanding job. Now, in part, I did hear you really liked two things. Okay? One is I heard, one's within our budget and one's not. So I heard you liked Taylor Swift, so we know that one's out of the budget. But we also heard that you liked some Twix bars, so we went all out and got you the king size kick bar, uh, Twix bar. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you have one more thing? I do have one more. I'd be remiss if I did not wish my wife a happy 19th anniversary. There's nowhere I'd rather be celebrating with you than here at the Township Board.
Happy anniversary.
Okay, public comments now. So in here, again, kind of the same format, you come up, give your name, your address. There's a five-minute limitation on it. It cannot be anything that's on the agenda, that's going to be coming up under regular business. There'll be opportunities later to discuss that, and the board does not respond. So that being said, is there anybody in the audience who has, there we go. Whichever one of you would like to come up first, please.
My name is Amy Williams at 4256 Myers, Watford, Michigan. I do live in Independence Township. Somebody's definitely listening to me. I just want to state that this neighbor dispute allowed to continue unresolved for far too long is now affecting my two-year-old daughter. At a recent public winter gathering on the lake, our family was the only one asked to leave while others remained. Out of desire to avoid conflict, we quietly removed ourselves. But I have to ask, how is it that we're continually viewed as a problem when time and time again, we are simply wanting the ability to live without fear and target or treatment, even in our own home? Having the police show up at our home on April 10, 2012, was unexpected and humiliating. We, and I ask, have the neighboring homeowners who are actively encroaching on this property received the same treatment? Were they served at their doorstep? Were they threatened with arrest? Or is this just enforcement, one-sided? The fact that our family, who has deeded access, is being treated like criminals while others who are violating property lines go unchallenged is unacceptable. This is just, isn't just an administrative error. It is traumatizing to my family, and I think you guys should all know that.
Anyone else? Yep, please come on up.
Hi. Hi. My name's Amiley Williams. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I live at 4256 Myers Road. I'm the second oldest of the Williams family. I'm a part of Shore Park, and I wanted to come up here and share how the township is attempting to change how our property has been being used. This property has been in our family for over 60 years as a place for homes who did not have direct access to the lake to have access for boating and docks. We have used this property to create many memories in the Clarkston area, promote this town, and build relationships with people who have lived in our house. We have had friends from Civil Air Patrol, the Oakland County Sheriff's Office. We have brought in homeless. We have had people from Vietnam, Japan, Spain, and many other countries use this property with us. Personally, this property has played a major role in my upbringing. It's where I invited friends, spent quality time with my family, and have experienced some of the best parts of my childhood. My prayer is that my two-year-old sister will have the chance to grow up with the same blessings and experience that, experiences that have shaped me. I do not understand why after all these years, this dock and property that has been in my family since 1964 has been causing this much chaos and bringing this much destruction into my family's mental and physical beings. My family has followed the guidance of the county to ensure that we are following all proper guidelines on the property. We take care of the property, and we have been nothing but kind and generous to everyone. I really hope that you will take into consideration that Shore Park has been no, has been more meaning, sorry, that Shore Park has more meaning than just a property. Thank you for your time and God bless.
Anyone else? Yes, please.
Ryan Miller, 4810 Crestview Drive, Clarkston, Michigan. I wanted to quickly find out if there's any type of protocol for cleaning up the garbage in and around the city of Independence Township. So if you drive behind like Kroger's or you drive behind some of these grocery stores, there's garbage littered all the way through all of their fields. And I noticed that it's, it's becoming a lot more, so it's even in like the water, in our water supplies, too. So around Kroger's on Sashawal Road, you can see the garbage all along there. I don't know who to, where to go to address that, or if you guys have a plan in place to go out and do anything about the garbage, basically. Do you guys have like a cleanup day? I don't know.
So we're not allowed to respond?
Oh, you're not?
No. But I've got your thing here. Well.
Okay.
Well. Same with yours, by the way. I didn't want to, because I was playing favorites.
Mr. Supervisor?
Yes.
I know this might be unorthodox, but I'm not sure what these ladies are referring to. So I know I don't want to get into the weeds, but I mean, it seems unfair that we're, they're talking about a subject that we don't know what. I personally don't know. Do you?
Yeah, I, well, I know the Wills from years ago, the family, through dance for my daughter, and she had messaged me through Facebook. And I said, this is a great forum, kind of shared their story, their, their, you know, what, part of what they presented tonight. And I said, this is a great forum to share, you know, during public comment, an opportunity to share what, what, you know, you perceive as, as being wrong, you know, treated. I think this is, I don't know if this is between the DPW or Planning Department, but.
So this is actually inappropriate for this, at this point, junction on the agenda, especially since this is moving into a legal situation, so.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know, beyond that, I don't know, like I said.
Yeah, we can, we're unhappy. Get you guys up to speed. Just said I'll address it, too.
Oh, okay, so yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we'll, it's just, this is not the right form.
Correct.
But we will definitely, I'll get something out for these and everybody here on the board as well.
Sure.
I just wanted to make them where I don't know what they're talking about, so.
It's a thing that's moving now pretty quickly, so.
Okay.
Gears are changing, directions are changing, but we will definitely get that out to you guys. Anyone else? Anyone online? Nope. Okay, then I'm going to close public comments, or public, now we're going to move over to public hearing. There isn't any. At this point, we are going to get a presentation from the Chair of the Planning Commission. Mr. Scarborough, if you would like to come up?
Thank you. Bill Scarborough, 5704 Nobville Circle. As you said, Chairman of the Planning Commission. My presentation will be short, as I'm sure you've all read it. It's required in the Planning Enabling Act that the Planning Commission submit an annual report to the board. From what I understand, that's never been done. So I took it upon myself to prepare one. We presented it to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission approved it for forwarding and presentation to your board. It's my hope, my intent, as long as I'm chairman, to continue to do this. And my hope that I will start a precedent that is continued, even if I'm not chairman. It's very cut, very simple and straightforward. I don't plan on going over the items. I'm sure everybody's read it. Would take, it's a matter of a few minutes. The only two things I want to comment on are under goals and objectives. This doesn't necess, I'm not commenting on them because of, they're more important. It's just, I think they need a little more explanation. Item C, set its own budget. I don't feel the Planning Commission necessarily needs its own budget. What we need is to know how much money is allocated to the Planning Commission for ordinance changes and for training. We don't know that. So, and, you know, whether I, it would be nice if the Planning Commission got some input in establishment of the budget and things like that, but that's the goal there. The other item I wanted to comment on is J, is to promote the concept of all township master plans being updated in a coordinated fashion. We have multiple master plans throughout the township. We, of course, we have the one that you'll be looking at later tonight. We have a Parks and Recs. I believe we have a DPW one, a Safety Path one. Some of them are, they're all done at different times, and some of them are done by different companies. And it seems to me that it would make a lot of sense to have them all coordinated and perhaps even rolled up into one master plan that incorporates all of those into one. So it's, it's the intent of that goal to encourage that and see that happens. Other than that, I'm glad to ask, answer any questions. Hope you'll ask questions, not me. And answer any questions? Nope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Carryover postponed agenda items. We do not have any. We're going to move over to the consent agenda. There's a request to approve the Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting Minutes of April 1, 2025. There's also a request to approve the April 8, 2025 check run, including an ACH for $2,869,947.83 to ratify the March 28, 2025 payroll for $358,443.40 and the January 2025 EFT ACH wire activity of $635,771.82. And that is it. Can I get a motion to approve the consent?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nope. All right. Motion carried. Items removed from the consent agenda, there aren't any, so we're going to skip over that. The next, we're going to go through the regular business. As with the comments and everything else, you will be allowed to come up. The public will be allowed to come up, make comments. This now has to be focused specifically on the actual item. Same thing. You have five minutes. You have to address, give your name, address, and know again that, you know, it's unlikely the board will respond to your questions. So the first one we're going to be going through is going to be presented by the Director of Planning, Mr. Ottman, regarding the approval and introduction of the first reading of the Zone Ordinance Tax Amendment to Section 3.09.
Good evening, Board members. Last fall, the Planning Commission expressed a desire to provide more notification for the public in terms of residents driving up and down the major roads here in the township. And it would only be for projects that require rezoning or special land use, so a public hearing. Right now, the state law says that we have to notify everyone within 300 feet of the subject property. We also have to advertise it in the newspaper, which would be the Clarkston News. And so, and that has to be done at least 15 days in advance of the meeting. So this is just providing another way, means of notification. Neighborhood communities like Orient Township have a similar type ordinance where you may drive down Clarkston Road and see a sign out there that says it's property subject to rezoning. So essentially, how this would work is the developer would, this would all be laid out in the application for, for these type of uses, special land use or rezoning, but in the application, it would lay out the size maximum that they're allowed to go, which is 16 square feet, four feet in height, which is actually what our temporary sign ordinance language is. And they, you know, the developer would have to install it. We would go out and inspect it. We've provided a basic spec in, in the packet tonight to show what it looks, looks like. And basically, it just says, subject to rezoning, and contact Planning Department with a QR code to our website, so that way people can get to the information. So back in March 13, the Planning Commission held the public hearing, which is required by law, and passed it on to the Township Board for, with a recommendation of approval of this ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Do you have any? To be clear, we're not losing the, the notification. The residents within that 300-foot radius will still get mailed. This is just in addition to. Correct. Yeah, I can't, I can't deviate from state law. Right, right. So, yeah, I mean, that's, this is just another means of notification. Right. So if you happen to be driving down Maybe Road and you see a sign, you can inquire. Thank you.
I just want to make a comment. This has been something the Planning Commission has been talking about for years. It's not a new idea. It's, it's actually been going on around the community, you know, this county for a long time. Lot of people complain, 300 feet, some people's lots are 300 feet, so you only get one person notified. No one else knows this big project's about to happen, you know, so. That was kind of the motivation, is that there really wasn't a good mechanism to know, to let a reasonable amount of people know what was being proposed to happen around their property, being that 300 feet was such a small distance. So this at least gives them a two weeks' notice, which the Planning Commission felt was at least enough time for them. If they're interested, they could look into it and see what's coming, make arrangements and be at the meeting, so. The burden falls on the developer. The cost falls on the developer. It's, it's just a great, a lot better way for us to be transparent about what's being proposed and allow people a time to react to it, so I'm definitely in favor of it.
I have a question on the QR code. Is it going to also give an image of what the proposed development's going to look like?
No, I, I thought initially it would just take you to the packet or, or something like that. It's, it's a little tough with PDFs bookmarked to take you right to the image. That's also something we can do. That's not an issue.
Is it possible to use the on-base or something like that, from where we're storing the documents, to be able to pull up the conceptual?
Yeah, well, I, I mean, it's basically, we'd store it in SharePoint.
SharePoint.
And share it that way. Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
I think it would help out a lot of people to get a good understanding of the visual of what's coming.
That's not a problem.
Any other questions or comments? No? Can I get a motion to vote on this then, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the introduction and first reading of the ordinance to amend Charter Township of Independence Ordinance Code, Chapter 50, zoning ordinance revisions to Article 3 and Section 3.09 relating to the posting of signage for all rezonings and special land uses, and schedule a second reading on the next available Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting following the required publication.
Second.
Can I, madam, can I get a roll call, please?
Clerk Newbeck, yes. Trustee Hayward?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Alamothu?
Yes.
Trustee Tetter?
Yes.
Supervisor File?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, excellent. Don't go anywhere. The next motion, our item on here is to, an adoption, the requ, our resolution of 2025-015, the Independence Township Master Plan Opportunity, 2035 Master Plan, to basically adopt it. And again, we're going to hear from the Director of Planning, Mr. Ottman.
Okay, so we're finally here after a long, several-year extensive process through multiple supervisors, planning commissioners, and here we are. So just for the public's, so they're informed on what a master plan really is. This provides the, the general statement of the township's goals and objectives and a long-range vision to define basically the future character of the community. It helps the Planning Commission work with long-range and short-range decision-making on rezonings and, and other, also the Township Board, but other deliberations that they may have. It lays out priorities for future ordinance amendments or goals and objectives that we need to reach. And really, it's an educational tool if someone's living, you know, moving to the community to understand kind of what we're about. So back in September, I had, I was in front of the board to actually have this go out for review. It's a 63-day state law required review period where we send it to everyone, Oakland County. We send it to all the neighboring townships, other stakeholders and utilities. We got, we got several comments, mainly from Oakland County. We, the Board of Commissioners Subcommittee approved the plan, so, but they also gave us several suggestions and feedback, and we made all of those changes. Safety Path Committee provided some input. We, we basically. Uh, we, we basically did everything that people had given us comment on. The Planning Commission had a few things to add. Uh, Parks and Rec Commission had some items. And, uh, the Open Space Committee also provided some feedback. So we made an extensive amount of changes to this over the course of the last year or so. Uh, the plan really, um, with new commissioners, things always change, and we were running into that, uh, all year last year. But, um, at this point, we are ready to adopt this plan. And, um, I think it's a good plan, and I don't, I don't, uh, hopefully don't have to do this for another five years 'cause state law requires that we at least look at it every five years. And it was due for a major update this time because of new demographics and, uh, other, other things we looked into, uh, in the background studies. So, um, we have a great website that this will remain on that site and be used as a tool, uh, to basically inform the residents on what the plan is. And, uh, with all our public comment and feedback and focus groups that we did, um, we really got an extensive amount of comments, which was great, throughout this whole process.
Trustee Tetter?
Yeah, I was just gonna, if you could maybe, for the public's benefit, share some highlights that you think were kind of noteworthy changes?
Well, sure. I mean, um, there, there was a lot that, um, I think we really opened up. We, we have a lot of office service master plan designations throughout this township. And one thing the Planning Commission looked into was, look, office space is not really a good market right now, obviously. So can we broaden that to office service and maybe a residential component? So maybe that opens up opportunities for mixed use. Um, so I think that was a great addition because really, the, the parcels that have been zoned, or master planned office service, have been master planned office service since 1998, and they're still sitting there. So there must be something to that. Um, you know, and, and really, this is just a modernization of previous plans, you know? Our, our master planning has been very consistent in our sewer and water district kind of serving as that growth boundary. And I think that this plan continues that trend, um, where we're just, we're trying to keep growth, you know, at, at the south end, basically south of Clarkston Road. That's where it's, you know, we have utilities and, and ability to, to grow as a community. But, um, the north end will still remain rural and for, and, uh, the northwest quadrant especially. You know, those large lots will continue. And, uh, the Planning Commission, maybe a future Board or Planning Commission may think differently, but I sure hope not 'cause the last 40 years, we've been consistent on that. So, and that's what makes us a unique community. You know, and I think with demographics, if you look at the breakdown of demographics, just one last thing, is we kind of have three townships in one. We have, uh, you know, the southwest quadrant is much different than the northwest quadrant or even north of 75. The demographics are all different in our community, and I think that's what makes it very unique. So.
Thank you.
Trustee Morocco?
I just got a couple of comments. I wanna thank, uh, Phil Scarborough. I think he did a great job. He implemented a part of the master plan that hadn't been there before. The implementation matrix with specific actions and timeframes to complete, which we never did, which is great. So that's looking forward with a plan, which was, when you have, I've been on the Planning Commission on and off for probably 20 years. This is the fourth master plan that I've worked on. So, um, uh, with all the changing of the Planning Commissions and the, and the supervisors, there hasn't been a goal. It's always shoot from the hip every five years, you know, what needs updating, things like that. So that takes it to another level. Um, it was a lot of money we spent on it. Uh, uh, you know, people felt, uh, that it was, uh, in need of updating. I would be very surprised if it would make any sense five years from now to spend any more money on it. We just have to decide, you know, just look at it. We don't need to actually change it or invest in it or spend money on it. And the changes I've seen over the last two decades have been very minimal because we've had a long-term plan, and we just keep dialing it in. As the properties, uh, become less available, there's less opportunities to change our mind and start doing things in different places. So, um, I, I'm, I'd like to think that this is one of our last master plans that actually changes, that has any significant change to it, you know? Because we've really been dialing it in so much as we've been going. Um, so that's, that's a good thing because we've been doing it every five years for, you know, a couple decades, so. But, uh, that was one of the biggest things, I think, that, uh, the Planning Commission did, Bill, specifically to, to lay out long-term goals. So everyone coming down the pipe's gonna still see them as time goes on, so. Glad to see it and, and, uh, being finished.
And typically with, with these type of reviews, you do a major review like this, it was time, and then the next time, it's, it's a minor update, you know? Maybe, you know, update some demographics and we review it, and it's very minimal. So that's kind of how these master plans have been flow. There's big up, big change, little change, 'cause the last update, we had like zero public comment. Um, nobody had to even, public hearing. So, um, this was, this was good to get all the feedback from the residents, so.
Trustee Hayward?
Yes. So I had a question. One of the things that I noted probably most, biggest change, not, not big change, but to the residential area on, um, the east side of Sashaba Road between Pelton and Mayby.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it was formerly single-family residential, and then it was, it's been changed to, um, multiple-family residential. I'm sorry, single-family attached-detached residential.
Yeah.
Um, can you explain a little bit why that was changed?
Well, it wasn't changed in this update. It was actually changed, I believe, two master plans ago.
Right.
The reason that is, is it's looked at as more of a transitional, uh, zoning. So, or transition of land use from the commercial down. And with the way those, the property characteristics are there, it, you know, somebody could theoretically assemble some parcels and do some kind of duplex product or, or something of the like. So there are a lot of rentals down there. So, um, you know, there are property owners who may look at that as an opportunity. We've not seen it in, I don't know, 15 years, but, you know, even a viable option there. But that's, that's always been there as just a transition.
I, I've seen, well, 'cause now there's, I know there's like 15 of those lots. I see one of them now has nothing on it. Somebody tore a house down recently. So the question is, what would that look like? So say somebody got two lots together, right? They, there's two acres. Could they, what could they build there with a house right next to it, a standard home?
Uh, well, it could be a duplex. You know, a single-family attached is essentially what you see in the insignia product, uh, where it's a, it's a duplex style or maybe three or fourplex unit. Um, basically bigger house, you know? Um, but it's multi-unit. And that's perfectly allowed, but they, again, they'd have to rezone it, first of all. And, you know, unless they've assembled several parcels, it's gonna, it's, there's gonna be some reluctance from the Planning Commission or even the Board to approve one parcel
Right.
to, to do some duplexes, you know?
So.
Realistically, they need to assemble several parcels.
Okay. So out of, so that one person with just one, one parcel couldn't go in there and decide that they were gonna, you, you're basically looking forward to something, a larger development, I guess.
Correct. Yes.
Safe to say, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
To, uh, a little bit more on that. The master plan itself does not automatically change the zoning that's currently in place, correct?
Correct.
It's just kind of looking forward, this is what we would like to see or, or direction we'd like to move towards.
Yeah, so we.
And so it's to give the Planning Commission kind of guidance as well as the Board here when we get brought different, um, variances, ask for our changes in the zoning, correct?
Yeah, so the, the one, the biggest thing that the Planning Commission looks for in a rezoning and the Township Board ultimately is, is it consistent with the master plan? Is it consistent with the future land use category being maybe single-family attached, detached? Or is it consistent with the goals and objectives? So they look at that as their main decision-making ability. And then obviously, there's other factors that go into it. But that's the most important part, uh, for them to look at and when you're making a decision.
You're right. Thank you.
Well, uh, a little out of order, but sure, come on.
Thanks, Phil Scarborough. Again, I just wanted to make, uh, one comment on the master plan. Um, I had a little issue with it. Um, there's like roughly 120-plus parcels on Dixie that, um, the current zoning is a more intense zoning. That's what's called, than what's called for in the master plan. And, um, I saw that as a conflict that I wasn't comfortable with. But, um, the Planning Commission is in the early stages of a plan to address that. Um, we think the, um, Dixie High, the Dixie Highway Overlay District was put in place years ago as a sort of a, I think, a Band-Aid for that, at least Band-Aid, in my opinion. I, I don't know what the rationale was back then. Um, but it still leaves us vulnerable for, uh, property that is zoned for more intense use than what the, the master plan calls for. And, um, it is our goal to, to correct that situation. Um, we think, and this is very early stages, but it will maybe entail, um, expanding the, um, Dixie Highway Overlay District, um, much similar to what we have here in the Town Center, something like that. So I just wanted to make sure, and, and make sure that you're aware of that issue. And, um, hopefully, we'll get cooperation from the township in addressing those issues as we go down that road. Okay?
Trustee, or, sorry, Clark?
Can I just ask why that wasn't addressed when you guys reworked the master plan as part of the new commission? You guys really kind of did tear into it and spent quite a bit of time. Why was it not addressed under those circumstances?
Um.
In that timeframe, so that it was?
It was a huge project. I did it myself. I plotted every parcel on Dixie and compared the current zoning to the master plan. It took months. And I was not, in those early stages of looking at the master plan, I was not aware that there was that much of a difference.
Mr. Supervisor? May I speak?
Yep.
Um, Carrie, I'll chime in on that. Um, so the master plan, this one and the previous ones have identified parcels on Dixie to be less densely, uh, what, less, less heavily zoned, less heavier uses. So the master plan's ability to do that is looking into the future, like we talked about, what we would propose. The master plan, working on the master plan is not, is a totally different thing than what he's taught, to correct the problem. By state statute, I think it recommends that, uh, township zoning, underlying zoning aligns with the master plan. And that's what he's saying, it doesn't. What we want it to be is not what it is now. And there are some parcels that the Planning Commission currently is working on to make recommendations to get those zonings to align. But it's not part of the master plan process. The master plan identified the problem, and now the Planning Commission is working on it to, um, to try to get those more in alignment, if that makes more sense, why it's two separate, two separate things.
Thanks.
All right. Anyone else online? Nope? Okay, we'll move on to L3. We're gonna look for a request to approve the Brady Lodge rental with alcohol on Thursday, May 8th.
We got a resolution.
Sorry, jumped ahead. Can I get a motion, please, for the resolution?
Move to adopt Resolution Number 2025-015 to accept the 2025 amendments to the Charter Township of Independence Master Plan, known as Opportunities 2035, as presented.
Support.
Now, Clark, can I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Hayward?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Alamothu?
Yes.
Trustee Tetter?
Yes.
Supervisor File?
Yes.
And Clerk Newbeck, yes. Motion carried.
Thank you. All right. Now, L3, which is a request to approve the Brady Lodge rental with alcohol for Thursday, May 8th. And our new Director, Parks, Recs and Seniors, Lisa will address this.
Good evening. So normally, you would see these on the consent agenda, but because this one was just slightly unique, wanted to take it out, um, just to get your approval because we're asking for approval of this rental contingent upon the receival of the required paperwork from our partnering organization. So as Jim mentioned earlier and announced earlier, on May 8th, we're hosting a Garden Gala, supporting the Clarkston Community Garden at Brady Lodge in partnership with the Rotary Club and the Parks Recreation and Seniors Advisory Committee. So, um, together with the Parks and Recreation Department, um, we're hosting the gala. Um, so there was no specific, um, agreement filled out. It was not an external rental. Um, but Clarkston Rotary will be supplying the certificate of insurance and following all alcohol guidelines. And that is in process. They've already submitted a one copy. There's a few tweaks that needed to be made. So we will have that in hand prior to the event, along with the State of Michigan Special License. So tonight, asking for your approval of this event, of this rental with alcohol contingent upon receival of finalized documents.
Any questions?
This one. Is there any, is, the township's doing this as a joint venture, right?
Correct. I mean, really, Rotary is graciously hosting.
Helping out the parks?
Correct. But we're, you know, Brady Lodge is being used. There's no charge for the use of the event.
Okay, that's what I wanted to get to. Okay, great.
Yeah.
That's a great venue to have an event like this in, so.
Anyone in the audience? Anyone online? Nope? Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make them. You, are you gonna do it? It's your event, why don't you do it?
I'll move to approve Brady Lodge rental with alcohol for the Garden Gala on Thursday, May 8th, 2025, contingent upon receival of certificate of insurance, meeting all township requirements and naming Independence Township as additional insured, as well as State of Michigan nonprofit special license, both to be reviewed and approved by the Parks Recreation and Seniors Director.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, L4, which is to approve the 2025 Budget Amendment, Number 5, which is pulling unspent 2024 funds into 2025 for various approval capital projects in ARPA. Uh, we all have the Budget Director, Rick Jaeger.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, first off, are there any questions with this, Maeve? I mean, I can run through the whole thing if you'd like, um, but if there's, has everybody read through it? You've got questions, you want me to run through it then?
No, I got, well, I can run through it. My list of questions on each line item, or you can go through the whole thing, whichever you prefer.
We'll just run through the whole thing.
Okay. Do you wanna talk about each, not, I don't have something to say on each one, but you wanna talk about items? Any questions as we go through them or at the end?
Sure, sure. As we go through them is fine. Okay? So starting with number one, um, basically, there are 16 items here, and 12 of them have motions. The other four do not. So we'll get into that once we get to those particular items. The first one here, it was design engineering, uh, that was approved for open space on the north end of Town Hall here, uh, for an amount not to exceed $46,000. Um, at the end of 2024, there's still $30,290 left and remains unspent. It needs to be pulled forward into '25, so the funds can still be used to upgrade the north end of the building. Any questions?
My question is, um, do we want to still spend that money on the, you know, the front of this building? I, I'm not in favor of it, and I don't know how it got, how we're, you know, what the plan is or what we're doing with it. And it's, uh.
The extent that I know at this point is that the design has been done, and these funds are left over. I talked to the supervisor about it, and he says, "Bring them forward 'cause we might be able to do something with those dollars. You have to improve the north end of the building." What that may be, I don't know at this point.
Has there been, what designs on what has been, has been completed?
You'd have to talk to Brian Ottman on that one. I, I know that there was a design that was put together on, they could get kind of a park kind of setting.
Yeah.
And that was all designed, and it's complete as far as I am aware.
I don't think we ever got to the point where we were gonna approve to do any of the work, though. Are we?
I think a lot of that was supposed to be done through donations, and I think even money across the street, I think, was supposed to contribute. I mean, these are these things I've heard.
Right.
Again, you'd need to have a conversation with him more directly 'cause he was the one, uh, basically working that project.
Well, my question is this, is if it's design engineering costs, we're already done with design. Why, why, why are we holding on to 30 grand? If it's not gonna be for design, I think we should use it for something that's, you know? I mean, I have lots of things I'd rather use it for than that, but, um, I'm just not, I'm not, I'm just not convinced that we wanna sit on $30,000 in design engineering of a project, especially if it's gonna be used for doing the project, 'cause that's different money from different places. Or reallocate it, but I don't feel like we should be carrying it over as design engineering costs 'cause design engineering costs are done. Is.
to bring it forward again, or to rebudget again in front of the board. So we already had approved it once in the past.
No, I get it.
And so to me, it was like, you know, there's some, I mean, the area out there's not that great.
No, but it's not engineering money, so how, even if we save it, we're going to have to reallocate it.
You'd have to reappropriate it, yes.
So what's the difference of reappropriating it or just amending the budget or creating a budget?
You could leave it off and then come back with a plan. I mean, that's exactly what could happen.
Okay, well, that's just, that's just my comment on that, how the board looks at it. I don't know.
Right. Anybody else have a question on this?
Nope. We'll go on to number two.
Good.
The next two items are actually ARPA-related, and that stands for American Rescue Plan Act. Several years ago, I believe in '22, we actually got about 3.9, just under 3.9 million dollars for, to use basically around the township on various projects. Getting down to the nitty-gritty here, there's like $3,000 left. And it came out because I thought I had it all allocated at the end of '24, but this is money that came about because some of the projects came in under budget slightly, so these funds kind of freed up. There's $3,000 there that needs to be basically pulled forward into '25, so we can basically spend it. The current plan is to use those funds to buy new executive boardroom chairs and these chairs in here as well. That's the current plan. Whether that happens or not, I'm not sure, but that's what we have talked about at this point. Any questions on that, number two?
So this is government money, right? There was, okay, I mean, we're government, but I mean, this is not money from taxpayers, directly from the township, it was money coming in from the federal?
That is correct. Yeah, that's what's left over. The second ARPA item on here does have a motion. It was for the generator at Brady Lodge for an amount not to exceed $120,000. At the end of '24, there's still $117,400 left and unspent, so that needs to be pulled forward so that we can basically complete that project and get it paid, and that will impact both revenues and expenditures. Any questions on that one? Yes, sir.
Are we mandated by law to put this in as an early voting station, Carrie?
Yeah, I don't know.
To have a backup generator on the Brady Lodge?
No, we're not mandated. It was something I requested.
And I agree.
In conjunction with Parks.
So I guess where I'm torn on this is that, you know, we got a serious problem with the building structure, you know, and leaking and all that, and I also agree with Carrie's point, as an early voting place, we need to have a way of having power and be open for it. I don't know that I'm in favor of spending a hundred grand on a generator right now while the building's decaying and leaking actively, and it's a rental, and it needs to be immediately, you know, addressed sooner than later. So I guess my concern would be, could we come up with a way of allocating this money to the Brady Lodge, which would be permissible if I'm not mistaken, because a generator or repairs would be under that funding? If we could come up with a way to sat, to satisfy the rental with a backup generator or some temporary generator during the election season, if that was our biggest concern, is while it was early voting, do we have backup power? If that's even necessary? You know, ideally, I'm in favor of eventually getting a generator, because I think if we are a venue, a rental venue, even though all rental venues don't have backup generators, I think it would be important to have one. As a historian and someone who's worked on the Brady Lodge, and I've been trying to get funding, I'm having trouble wrestling between a generator and rest, and protecting the, which isn't enough to do the whole building, the hundred grand, but it is enough to do what we would need to actively stop the water infiltration. So that was just my points on that budget amendment.
No, Matthew, yeah, sorry. Sorry, Carrie. Clark, Carrie?
My question would be, since we already, the board already approved the purchase not to exceed amount for the generator, if that was stipulated in the motion as to where the monies were coming from, so if the board already took action to approve the purchase of the generator, subject to ARPA funds, then I think we're all, you know, we're obligated to use the ARPA funds, and we also have a deadline that we're looming the end of the month to have these funds allocated to projects because we have to report. So my opinion is, and it wasn't only just, but you did say that, it wasn't only just for voting, I have talked to supervisor and to the Parks and Rec Director about it being a future warming center, as well as I would not want to be the person that had to tell a bride that the venue was not, didn't have power in the winter or air conditioning in the summer, for something that they had paid a deposit on and had thousands, you know, people, a hundred people coming to, so.
I would also like to comment that this was approved by the board, and the board authorized me to negotiate and engage in a contract, so this is, generator's already under contract.
Okay. Moving forward, the next item is a motion, it was for design engineering for the Clarkston Road from, it looks like a paving project from Clarkston Road from Wingate to Sashaw for a not-to-exceed amount of $39,262. At the end of '24, there was just under $8,000 left unspent that needs to be pulled forward so we can complete that project. Back in August of 2024, the former supervisor signed an agreement with Noah K. Fraus for developing a master plan for the recently acquired forty-acre parcel adjacent to Clintonwood Park. Price quoted was $30,600, of which $18,000 was meant to be spent in 2024. So there's kind of two pieces to this. So the first piece of the $18,000, there was $12,725 left of that, so they really didn't spend the $18,000 like we thought they were going to. So that money needs to be pulled forward into 2025, and then the difference between the $30,600 and the $18,000 we had budgeted was not rebudgeted in 2025, so we need to also pull that money forward, and just so we have the balance of that $30,600 out there to finish this project.
Rick, do we know if we're going to be in budget on this, and what exactly the deliverables are on this money?
As far as I'm aware, we'll be within budget, but I haven't talked to the actual engineers. I'd have to do some research on that and talk to Lisa and see exactly what they're saying.
Do you know what they're doing, just roughly? What, we're paying them to engineer? What a master plan is on the park?
No idea. I haven't been involved in it, just on the numbers side only.
Okay.
Oh, let's see, your number six.
Clark, Carrie?
I'm sorry.
Just as a side note, if this never came to the board for approval, and we may need to be bringing it and ratifying the approval, and if it's not been signed, has it been signed?
I would assume so. I mean, I believe the supervisor signed off on it. It was within his spending limit, so I'm assuming it was signed off on.
You said it didn't come to the board for approval, so.
Correct. But he has a $35,000 spending limit, this is $3,006.
But it's an agreement, a contract, it really should come to the board.
I'm not disagreeing, I'm just saying that's what happened.
Bringing it back for ratifying, that's all.
Okay.
Side note.
Number six, the fire department ordered paratech equipment. It's basically extraction tools, I don't know too much about that, but they ordered this back in June of 2024 to cost of $10,428. Equipment did not come in during 2024, but is expected in '25. The $10,428 needs to be pulled forward into '25, so that when the equipment is finally delivered, they have the budget that wants to make payment. This item was expected in '24, that's why they didn't rebudget it for in '25. Number seven, there was a motion on this back in 2019, it's taken a while, but this is a sewer rate study for an amount not to exceed $38,600. To date, there is still $22,073 that needs to be pulled forward into '25, so that the project can continue to be hopefully finished and paid for.
I have a question on that one. Why, was it projected to take this long?
I just think there's been, again, we'd have to talk to Dave probably about this to get more specifics.
Six years.
I know, it's been a while. There's been some delays, I'm not exactly 100% sure of why these things, why this has been delayed, because we have the same thing going on with the hydraulic sewer model. It's the same thing, it's the next item on here. That one was also approved in 2022. This one moved a little faster, but not, it's kind of stalled at this point as well. That one was for an amount not to exceed $58,000, and there's still like $52,000 left on that one. But Dave wants them both pulled forward, they are still, according to him, active projects, so I'm doing what he is requesting.
Hold on a second, I'm trying to see where he's at. Which one are you on now?
Number eight.
That was seven and eight, both those two.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right.
So, hang on one second.
Okay.
I'm still struggling with the timeframe.
Okay.
And I know you work closely, but Dave, are we losing any of the value of having this done because it's taken so long?
As far as I'm aware, what this study is, it's going to a flow-based system compared to the REU system that we're doing, and I guess there's a lot of complication with that, and there's a lot of pluses, there's a lot of minuses. It's, I don't really know much more about it than that. We'd have to talk to Dave to get more detail out of exactly where we're at with that, but I know it's a, it's a pretty complicated process to make that switch, and there's some discussion as to whether it's even worth making that switch at this point. So I have a feeling it's just being held up for, until we actually understand exactly what we want to do here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Moving on, number nine. This has to do with the interior renovations at the DPW. It was for a not-to-exceed amount of $1,326,000. At the end of 2024, there was still $40,000 left unspent that needs to be carried forward into '25, so the project can be completed. And just a note on that, the money that I was talking about just then, that's actually split between water and sewer 50/50.
I just got a question. So we're down to forty grand on a millions-plus project. Are you telling me that we're, are we going to come in to the penny of this amount?
Could be real close. I know there's a few things that are still hanging out there that need to be done.
I mean, that's right down to the bottom of the perfect, you know?
Yeah, we're right down. Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, they were pretty good with their estimates, so, I mean, it's coming right down to the nitty-gritty, but yeah, that money should get us to the end.
There hasn't been any talk about needing more to wrap it up?
Not as far as I'm aware.
That you're aware of?
Not as far as I'm aware. I mean, I know Dave has other things in the budget, like new lights and things, but that's not part of this.
Okay.
Okay? Number 10, there was $40,000 budgeted for a portable bypass pump in 2024 within the sewer fund. The pump never got purchased and was not rebudgeted in 2025, but it's still needed. So the $40,000 needs to be pulled forward into '25, so the pump can be purchased and paid. The rest of them all have motions. The first one here is construction engineering for the Majors, Meyer, and Hidden Lane Ejection Station rehab that was done, for a not-to-exceed amount of $230,000. At the end of '24, there's still $103,500 left unspent and needs to be pulled forward so the work can be completed and paid. The next item, number 12, this is the same project, but it's the construction side of it only for Majors, Meyer, and Hidden Lane. That was for an amount not to exceed $4,701,000. At the end of 2024, there was $3,480,000 left unspent that will need to be pulled forward into '25, so the project can be completed and paid.
I got a question on this one. All right, this thing's been going on since like '22. They've had these, this neighborhood of our road tore up, excavators and asphalt damage for over a year in these people's neighborhood. So I did talk to Dave about it the other day, because residents have been asking me, well, you know, is this thing ever going to finish? You know, people haven't showed up for months. Dave said he gave them 30 days to wrap it up, because it's been, you know, such a mess over there. My question is, is if, what, it didn't make any sense to me, is that if we're holding the, if we're about done, and I've been watching it, you know, we got $441,000 left to spend on, or no, that's not, it's, which one is, what's left at the bottom?
It's number 12.
Number 12, I'm sorry.
Three million, 48,000.
$3 million left unspent?
Yeah, a lot of that's already been spent.
On a project that's been going on for years, okay? How is it that if we're almost done with the project, and we have $3 million left to spend on a project, that there's, it's not, that's not the one I'm interested in, no, no, 11 I'm interested in? How can there be another 100,000 in engineering on a project that's at the end of the project? Like, wouldn't the engineering be years ago?
Well, it's construction engineering, so it is, I mean, that, basically, they are out there looking at what has been done, making sure that everything that's been done is proper, and obviously that hasn't completely finished up yet.
So you think it's $100,000 in them, engineers verifying the work?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yeah. That's what it's for, yes.
Okay, well, that seems good, that seems excessive to me, but that's fine. I'm not, I'll talk to Dave about, I'll talk to Dave about that.
The original amount was 230,000. Yeah, the original amount was 230,000.
No, I know, but they've been there for years, so to have, half of it left seems like a lot left, you know?
No, I hear you. I hear you.
So, okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Moving on, the, number 13, there was a motion for approving CCTV inspections in the village for a not-to-exceed amount of $250,000. At the end of '24, there was still $67,608 left unspent, and that needs to be pulled forward into '25, so we can complete that project. Number 14, this is an Eagle, and Eagle stands for Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. They've required a distribution system materials inventory project to be done for a not-to-exceed amount of $420,750. At the end of 2024, there were still $64,766 left unspent, and needs to be pulled forward into '25, so the project can be completed and paid.
Rick, do you know who's paid, who, where that money come from? That 400 grand, was it government, state money, or, I don't even know what, we spent a half a million dollars on a, whatever they call it.
This one strictly came out of our pocket, or the DPW's pocket, on this one.
And it was mandated by the Eagle for us to have to do it?
And they can do that. Yep. They force us to do stuff.
They can do it, huh?
They can. Yes, they can.
Do you know what it is, what a distribution system material inventory is?
Not specifically, no.
You had to go through and, you have to identify the material of every pipe. It's kind of what came out of the Flint water, and so they want an inventory at the state level to make sure that any type of corrosive pipes have been identified, and then ultimately there's a plan to replace them, and which ones are in there currently.
Okay.
So it's even on, even on new builds. I mean, this was going back to a board meeting, I think, that McKee was here doing, I think it was even before I was elected, but I was in the audience, and he said that they went through and they mandated that they go through and do it, and do the inventory and report it back to the state. Originally, I think it was supposed to be done by October of last year, I think.
Somewhere in that range, yeah.
And then we got a little bit of an extension, because they realized how ridiculously short the timeframe was to try to get that full inventory.
Okay. Thank you.
And I believe Dave stated that we don't even have lead pipes in our system, but nonetheless, we're still obliged to adhere to that requirement.
I do have a question, though, on the CT, CCTV's inspection. Do we know, is the village reimbursing us for that?
Not as far as I am aware.
So why are we doing it? Why are we doing their?
Again, we're getting into areas here that we need Dave to answer these things, you know, why this is being done. I don't know if they requested it, if it's being, you know, imposed on us, I'm not 100% sure. Again, I wasn't part of those conversations.
There was an motion on this originally, though, so does anybody happen to remember why, or what the details around there were?
I'm wondering if it's covered under our intergovernmental agreement?
It's possible.
If it's somehow embedded in there, but I'm not sure.
It is. You have an agreement with the village dating back to 1981.
Wondering if it's covered under our intergovernmental agreement?
It's possible.
If it's somehow embedded in there, but I'm not sure.
It is. You have an agreement with the village dating back to 1981. I'll look at that and let you know as far as what the party's responsibilities are for any sort of reimbursement. But we are obligated to do the CCTV inspection of the village pipe every 10 years under that contract.
They're responsible for the repairs. We just have to scope and let them know what's going on.
So do we have a sinking fund for that or do you know?
I have no idea.
So you don't know what fund that's?
Oh, let's see, your number 15. Design engineering for the Drayton Water Main Extension for a not to exceed amount of four hundred and forty-three thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars. This just this was near the end of 2024, so there's still a whole bunch of that left over. Four hundred and forty-one thousand is left unspent. That needs to be pulled forward so the project can be completed and paid. Then last but not least, this is the construction for the DWSRF project, which was basically the water main on Parview. Okay? And we that was for an amount not to exceed three million five hundred and fifty thousand. There's still seven hundred and seven thousand left. That again, needs to be pulled forward so the project can be completed and paid. And that's it.
I have a follow up question.
That's it?
I don't like them all together.
Number 15, does that not follow where we were applying for some grant monies?
Yes.
And do we know where that's at?
I know we're not going to get it for the current year. Because Dave told me about that. We've already been turned down for those funds, but they said immediately turn around and reapply for the next year. And he's already done that.
So.
I thought we received a letter saying we were.
So I met with Congresswoman McLean. And because the administration change, all the appropriation funds have gone. And so we were, they were appropriated for us and everything else and had, I guess for all intents purposes, if Biden had won, it would have followed through the normal process. The funds would have been released or signed off and released. Because Trump won, he put a kibosh on all that. And so now for 26 or 25, those funds are no longer there. Matter of fact, I was there today talking to her about it. There's she did not guarantee that we would get it again next year, but there would be a high probability that since we were already awarded some of these funds, that we will get them for 26. So, you know, it's just kind of the the new administration just put a hold on everything.
A question.
Sure.
Since you've got these all on one amendment, how do you how if we wanted to pull something out, how do you do that?
Oh, you can, I mean, they're all identified on the on the second page here when we start getting into the actual amendment itself. It just wouldn't do those pieces, that's all.
I don't particularly have an issue with what you're proposing, and I know you're not proposing it, but they I do want to I do think that I'd like to come, you know, have a dialogue about. I don't mind moving money forward, but there are some things I think that could be discussed on do we need to, you know, are we going to use it all up? Do we need to pay it all out? You know, there's any some of these categories that we went through that aren't just just because we're moving it forward, doesn't mean we still have to spend it.
Correct.
And and we are tied to some, you know, past approvals that we did and contracts we've signed. I just so.
Well, just keep in mind, some of the motion ones, you probably will spend the bulk of those funds because there were quotes associated with those. So those are probably going to come in pretty close to zero.
The ones that say to complete?
Yes. And and the ones that all have the motion numbers, yeah.
And when you do these, like really a lot of stuff with Dave, we should have Dave here. You did a great job of explaining everything you could for Dave.
So in fairness to Rick, because there was a motion tied to it, these are things that have already been passed by the board. I did not feel that there was going to be the need because it had already been passed by the board. So, you know, that don't don't shoot the message.
I did pull your REU contract with the village and basically they pay us, they pay the township quarterly for those services in exchange for the township undertaking certain duties such as every 10 year CCTV inspection.
Thank you, Brittany.
Wait a minute, let me ask a follow up to that. So you're saying that 250 they are supposed to pay us?
They pay us quarterly for what is supposed to be the cost of the maintenance. And if our actual maintenance costs end up exceeding what they're paying us quarterly, we have a right under the contract to increase the cost. So it should end up being even at the end of the year. And if it's not, then we have a right to renegotiate those costs that they're paying us quarterly.
Have we in your tenure here ever gone back and re?
Not as far as I'm aware. We collect about forty-five thousand dollars a year in maintenance.
So on a 250, forty-five thousand over. So is that forty-five thousand over 10 years, so it's 250 on a 250?
Forty-five thousand a year.
Yeah.
For 10 years, you'd have 450.
Yeah, that's what I said. So is that that 450, 425 going to go to the 250?
Yeah, more than likely, yeah. I mean, there's nowhere to really isolate it, but yes, it's all part of the the pool of money that Dave works with, yes.
And are we track, I know we are. So do you happen to know if we are in the red or black on that?
I do not know that. My gut tells me since this is the first time we've done it in 10 years, we're probably in the black.
Until we get the synvoys.
No, I mean, we cover the 250, but we don't have to cover the repairs. So the village has to cover the repairs. This is only for the basically the scoping of the pipes to let us know what's wrong with them.
So Rick, what so over 10 years, every 10 years, what happens to the overpayment from the village if they're paying?
Goes into their fund balance.
Of what they owe us for other stuff. So do you feel confident that we're not paying for this, the township that we're?
Absolutely, I feel confident. Yeah, no, that forty-five thousand over 10 years definitely covers it, no problem. I'm not sure the last time it was actually done, but I'm assuming it was about 10 years ago, roughly. We have to find out from Dave, he would probably know. All of us, you know, would probably be best knowing that. Okay?
Yep.
Let me ask you one more question on on this, on all of these. If the numbers don't come out exact to the penny that you have, as you have listed here. Obviously, if there's a shortage, we're going to have to come back and make an amendment to the budget to pull it from wherever.
Correct.
And.
Normally fund balance.
Yeah. And if we have a surplus, that doesn't mean we have to spend it.
Correct.
We can send that back to.
Yeah, basically, most of this stuff is done through POs. So if there's anything left on a PO, once the project is done, we just basically cancel the PO. At that point, whatever's left on it.
And at the end of the year, the budget would show a surplus if we didn't spend it all.
Correct.
And the cash would still be sitting there.
Correct.
Theory.
You know, me and my cash.
In theory.
Absolutely.
Other questions? All right, so I'm a little bit with trustee Morocco. Do we just make one motion for all it? I like that. All right, can I get a motion to approve 1 through 16?
I'll make a motion to approve 2025 budget amendment number five as presented. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Budget amendment number six. This is just a little bit of housekeeping. It has to do with trustee wages, life, short term and long term disability and Walters Lake. The first item, I actually was doing a review of the 25 numbers so far this year. I realized that we never budgeted for the extra increase for the trustees starting in 2025. So that one's on me. The meeting fee went up from 300 to 400. And then after talking to Clerk Newbeck, we actually increased special meetings from five up to eight just because I know you guys have had a couple of special meetings early in the year. That'll only be for this year. We'll take it back down to five starting in 2026. So this amendment here just basically brings sixteen thousand eight hundred dollar increase plus another twelve hundred and eighty-five dollars for payroll taxes. So that's number one. Number two. Again, I was doing a review of life insurance, short and long term disability. Came up with some increases that were not budgeted. They're all smaller dollars, but it will basically keep those line items within budget. And then the final item, this was brought to my attention by the treasurer from the Walters Lake Board. I guess they had a meeting and they approved an increase to the Walters Lake Fund budget in the amount of five thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars. And that's for the completion of work on the new seawall.
Question.
There's emails and there's, I believe, the invoice itself that was attached to the packet or for that that made.
Trustee Morocco?
I guess I'd want to know how the how that works. Under what authority can they add money to their own budget without the board doing it? And how is where's this money coming from and why are we giving?
They have a fund balance.
Huh?
They have a fund balance.
So it's coming out of their fund balance that they have?
Yes, yes, absolutely. It's not general fund money, it's nobody's money, it's their money, basically.
That's generated from what?
SAD.
Okay, from the Special Assessment District?
Yes, sir.
And they have the ability to move their own money around?
Yeah, basically, when we do this budget, it's their board who does the budget. We just simply put it into the board packets and present it. But it's their 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 board that basically sets that budget.
Just to follow up, Sam, they have to present board minutes, meeting minutes, approving. You know, one board member, one member of the Lake Board can't come in and say, move some money for me or pay this bill.
So I guess what I'm not clear on is so if let's say they didn't need the fifty-eight hundred dollars, where's that fifty-eight hundred dollars sitting in a in a fund balance generating revenue, like in an investment account or something?
No, it's just part of our, you know, pooled cash and it's all gets invested.
It's part of their pool of cash from the SAD?
The township's pooled cash. I mean, they're getting interest earned on it and everything, you know, based on the same interest that we earn on every all the all the other funds. It's the same thing.
So, yes and yes.
I'm not.
So.
I'm not a finance guy, so you know, bear with me.
Think about this, the money all goes into one bucket. Okay, so the SAD money comes in and the other pool of cash comes into this one bucket. Treasurer goes out and invests it.
Yeah.
Okay, it's still identified on all financials that it's their money.
Okay.
Right? And so, you know, as the the SAD brings in the funds, it's noted that it's theirs. It's clearly identified as their money, even though it's pooled together into the investment.
So they have a surplus money in their SAD generating revenue, generating revenue?
Yeah, it's not huge.
No, I know, but just that's what it is. And then they're just pulling off of their savings account, let's say, the SAD savings account in layman's terms. Keep it down low for me.
Come on, brother.
All right, thank you. Now I get it.
All right, very good. And that was it for that one.
I'll make a motion to approve 2025 budget amendment number six as presented.
Court.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the next one's mine. Okay, so we're looking at for the additional money for gravel roads. I met with the RCOC and they explained to me that last year and two years prior, the board had come up with a plan to repair and put gravel on public roads, not private. Private roads are off the table for not only this one, but for the chlorine. And to keep it going, it was a hundred thousand last year. We're looking at a hundred thousand this year. For whatever reason, only 50,000 was brought forward. So we're going to look to make an amendment to carry adjustments, sorry, to bring over another 50,000 to do the same hundred thousand as last year. All right, let's just start at the end and work our way across.
Well, I my recollection, we had a pretty spirited conversation about this very topic. I don't think you were on the board yet, supervisor file, but I was relatively new to the board. But again, a perennial frustration, lo and behold, the county's out of money. We have to continue to backfill, no pun intended here, with these shortfalls. My recollection, that was 50,000 dollars. And there was a pretty deliberate discussion and consensus among the board members that we were going to commit 50,000 dollars. The actual representative from the county was here presenting to us. And I think it was a strong consensus at the time to keep that amount at 50,000. And I think there was some amendment to the, I don't know if it was if we had anything beyond that, like to pace for inflation beyond that. But I think we were at that time pretty hard, had a hard line position to maintain the 50 because that's what we had done in the past. The hundred thousand would be a doubling of what we committed to last year.
So it was a it was presented to me that it was a hundred thousand last year. So are you saying the 50 was it was talked about for 25, it would only be 50? Or are you saying for 24, it was only 50?
When I don't know, it was six months ago, maybe Clerk Newbeck. It was held to 50 and I don't, there was no discussion or talk about extending.
425, I'm asking which.
Well, I don't think that had been, there had been no request for 25 because that was in 24. So I think the.
So it had to have been a year ago then because you had to have all these things in actually a couple of weeks ago.
It was a while ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I, yeah, whenever it was, there was a pretty robust discussion about capping our contribution at 50,000.
Okay, now, just to clarify some things here, we've only budgeted 50,000 for gravel ever in the past, okay? Last year, as you mentioned, we had Chris Dahl in here. He did, you know, a presentation to you guys. At that point in time, the supervisor was actually looking for, I believe, a total of 200,000 dollars that he was looking for an amendment on. We had this spirited conversation and you guys settled on an additional 50, which brought up to the hundred that the supervisor is currently talking about.
So.
Okay.
Yeah, because he just to add to that point, he did come back and ask for 196,000 and something to do all the roads. And, you know, we're not, I'm like, no. And so we came back to keep the program going that was established from last year to keep going on the roads.
So the so again, to clarify with what you're saying, Rick, is historically it was 50,000. We ended up plugging your nose and and supporting with an additional 50,000. Is that the rest of the board's recollection?
I think so. But there was much more to the story.
Oh, there was. I mean, it was quite a conversation.
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Terry, you got something to say, you want to talk first? So I, so at that meeting, we found out several things. It takes seven years to get to your road in the township. Every seven years, they do in front of your dirt road. That's I have it right here. This is what the county guy gave me, okay? So last year, they did one, two, three, four, five sections of road in 2024. This year, they're proposing five sections of road in 2025, okay? Keep in mind that it takes seven years for you to get your road done. After the first heavy rain after they gravel, it's like you didn't get your road done. Okay? And then they maintain the all the rest of the township, the other 50 roads for the whole entire year for seven years without us investing and putting gravel on the road. Okay? So my argument then and my argument now is, so last year Stickney Road, which I live on the corner of, was done. Within weeks, you couldn't even tell it was done, okay? Now they're going to do Pine Knob Road in front of my house that runs the other direction, okay? And that's, you know, so I'm thinking, you know, you would think that I would be, hey, seven years it takes. I'm getting both of my roads done. Within two years, I'm ahead of the curve. The problem is, I don't see any value in it. I've lived out there for 18 years. They've gravelled the road a couple of times in 18 years. All it takes is one hard rain and you just washed away the 50 grand, you know, and it's in the ditches in my yard. I've always said that the money, if you live on a dirt road and you can't go outside for a good portion of the year because the dust is so bad and you're trapped in your home, the money is better spent on calcium chloride than gravel. Now, I know we've tried to get more calcium chloride treatments, which is next on the agenda, and they push back a little bit. But I am, I even living on a dirt road and I'm the one getting them done, I don't see, I don't see the value in increasing our investment because they do maintain the roads when it washes out. They do grade them on a regular basis. They do take care of them like they're supposed to. So you don't get a very good return on the 50, on the 50 grand, you know, that because of. Now, I'm not saying you wouldn't on a flat section of road or different pieces of road, but because of the topography of the roads near my house and one good rain, it's all in the ditch. So I just, I wouldn't be in favor of boosting the gravel amount very far because I don't see the value in it. I'd rather spend that, find a way to spend that money on separate contractors or getting the county to do more calcium chloride, which actually has a direct effect because they actually do maintain the roads and pretty good on the dirt roads. I can tell you that compared to a lot of the paved neighborhood roads, Pine Knob and Stickney are smooth half the time and those are never smooth. So I feel privileged, you know, I feel lucky sometimes to even have that. But I'm just, I just, as a patron of it, I don't I wouldn't be in favor of to keep boosting the amount to it because I just don't see the, I just don't see the return on it. Because if you don't do it, they still, you still get the same service. You still, they still grade in the same time schedule. They still take care of it if it's really bad. They still add millings and dirt if there's a really bad washout because they're responsible to do that, to maintain the roads. And since we're not talking about the whole township, only a very small percentage, you know, every seven years getting done, it's hard to see the difference, the value in those in those few pockets that get done. So I don't know how to explain any better, but that's my opinion on it.
Thank you. Trustee now, Matthew?
So just for the public's information, I did go and talk to the county about this transit tax we're paying. And since we're not getting the benefit of those buses really, asking if that some of that money that our taxpayers are paying could be used for this instead, that was shut down. It's only being used for those buses and that's it. So that transit tax will not be switched to anything else, even though I tried to use the thing that your buses are going to be driving on these bad roads when they, when and if they ever come up here. And it was still shut down. So to let you know that that pool of money is not available to use. The second thing, I don't like this. We've been good stewards doing this, but we are not in the job of roads. And I'd rather look of getting totally out. And if the people who live on them have issues, it needs to go to the county. We keep helping them every year by giving them, you know, we don't just because our budget's doing a little better, doesn't mean we're going to constantly give them handouts because they're not. So I think this whole thing needs to be addressed. I understand for years, we've been good stewards, giving them this money. I know there was talk about helping with part of Pine Knob Road and Pine Knob offering some to help because that new entrance or whatever off Clarkston that happened. So I I just think this whole package needs to be looked at and I'd be fine with getting rid of it altogether.
Trustee Hayward?
Well, it's interesting, I wish Treasurer Brown were here, but he did put, and you should, everybody should be interested to find out exactly where their tax money goes. And you can get one of these upstairs anytime. I'd like to see him put it right on. I'd like to see him put it right on our webpage, but if you see this pie, here's Clarkston Schools, this is where your tax money goes, that percentage, which is 41%. Basically, here's Oakland County. They take 12%, and now they want more money. To me, it's a double dip. We're already, you guys, me included, we're already paying Oakland County for services, and they're coming to us for more money. They did the same thing with the police department, you know, raising our rates, and we have a certain amount of money, and I don't, this is, this is the amount of money we have left for everything that we do, and that goes to the fire department, the police department, our general fund, and then some for the safety pack. So we keep dipping into our, our general fund or our very little bit of money that we do collect to put it back into the roads, to give the county money to keep propping up the county. What Sam says, you know, I mean, the county is responsible for the roads. And I get it though, but we have fire trucks that go down those roads, so it's, it's always a, the conundrum of, you know, well, we got to take, we want to have good roads for, you know, if you live on a dirt road and we need to get emergency services there, we want to be able to get them there as quickly as they can, so we need good roads for that. So, but I'm with you. I have a problem with continuing to give the county money, and they keep coming back and wanting more money from us, so that's just my feeling.
My final comment would be that gravel went from $9 a yard to $21 a yard, so what we're getting is so minimal. And if you're only getting a tiny little bit as it is, and it takes seven years to go around, it's really, you know, they're just, they're not fixed, there isn't much of the road being repaired. We just had our, I mean, we literally had our own millage to repair all the county roads that we paid for, you know, millions of dollars. It just, I, you know, I don't want to burn them and probably piss them off, and then they don't grade, but, you know, I, I'm with them. I think that we just keep feeding the beast, and I think they're going to take care of it without us giving them money. And, and instead of this revolving plan, where I literally can tell you every section of road through 19, through 2028 that's going to get done, that's not necessarily where we need the money. If I'm, if I, if you want to mean, if you want to donate 50 or $100,000, then I think the township or the DPW or the building department should identify which roads are the worst roads that actually need it, because just saying, we're going to go do this road, and seven years later, we're going to come back and do this road, that doesn't fix the road problems. You could be, just like in my, in my situation, they gravelled Stickney, but there wasn't anything wrong with Stickney, where there probably was other roads that were needing of that gravel, and we're buying it by the ton. Maybe we should have a say on where we feel the tonnage should go, or at least have some say in it with them where to invest our tonnage, because tonnage leads to miles, you know? And to just randomly say, we're going to go do Indian Wood Road in 2028, I don't know that that's good, that's a good plan, you know?
Okay.
Just something to think about.
So let me kind of run through a couple of things here. The plan on the roads that you're talking about was generated from last year. So he gave it to me, and I did go back through, and I asked him, well, wait, why are we picking these roads specifically? And his answer wasn't really all that strong. So I said, I would like you to go back through and rate every single dirt road we have on a scale of one to 10, one being it's a miserable drive and we might lose a car if it falls into a pothole, two, jeez, it's almost like pavement, okay? And he is coming back with that. So we do, just so you get to know, we do get to pick the roads that we want to do. What we're constrained by is only by the dollars, right? So $100,000 is only going to buy so much gravel. It's going to go down the road so far. We are allowed to pick where we want to have that go, though, okay? So that, that is part of it. The other thing that I would like to say is that, you know, we have family property that I drive down a dirt road all the time, and you are correct, I think there are times where the road can be washed out. There's other times where the road can be just fine after, a different road could be completely fine after a rain start. So it does have a lot to do with the grade of the road and everything else. Where you particularly, where you live particularly, it's a little undulating, and so I can see where that, that water keeps picking up speed and washing away. To me, when I was discussing this with him, I have a kind of a feeling like we have taxpayers' money. If we want to redirect it to something else, that's fine, but, you know, cars, bad roads cost people a lot of money. I mean, we're talking about emergency and everything else, but I'm saying, man, you can just go down that road, and I know that it was even Snyder, back in the day when he was governor, came back and said that the average car repair because of the Michigan roads was something like $350 a year. So there are costs that are beyond just the emergency vehicle and all that. Again, what he was presenting was what I was led to believe was a program that you guys had already put in place and agreed to and were moving forward with.
So I would say, if I may, this, this doesn't fix roads. This just puts a couple inches of gravel on random roads in the township, whether they're in good condition or not. Now, we get to pick the roads, I get you, but we're talking about one and a half miles for $100,000.
That's more than that.
Well, according to this, and at $50,000 for, $50,000 for 2,300 tons of gravel, which covered 1.5 miles in 2023, which was at $9, you know, a yard, a ton, and now we're at $20 a ton, so the price has doubled.
So it's 2014.
Okay, so what is it at?
So in 2014, it was $9.25.
Okay.
So in 10 years.
Okay, so we could get a mile and a half out of it now?
In 20, in 23, we could.
So we could get three, three miles if the cost is helped. We could get three miles with 100 grand or a mile and a half with 50 grand.
There you go, exactly. I would agree with that.
That's, that ain't much.
No, it's not.
That ain't much. I mean, that isn't, you, we're not talking fixing potholes and stuff. This is just, they just go down the road, whatever condition it's in, hit it, grate, no, they grade it, and then they have a truck come through, put two inches of stone on it, and then grade it flat, calcium chloride, and leave. That, you know, that's, that's the, you know, for one and a half miles of road, which is not very much in the dirt.
Three miles. Or 50, depending which one you're talking about.
So three miles, so you're talking about probably from, you know, let's say Pine Knob from Clark, from Sashaba to Clarkston.
Three miles isn't a lot of.
No, that's what I'm saying. So are we really getting a benefit for the three miles or for a mile and a half, you know? Right now, our budget says we get a mile and a half. We could bump it up to three if we go with the 100 grand, but is it a significant?
Of our 30 miles of dirt roads.
Yeah, we do have 30. To put things in perspective, too, four years ago, it cost a million dollars a mile to pave. It's up to 3 million a mile now. So, I mean, everything's just going up. And I'm not saying that in a sense of the fact that, oh, that's what makes it okay. I'm just saying that everything is going up in cost, right? So, I mean, at the end of the day, you know, if the board decides that they don't want to do it, that, that's fine. That's what the board chooses to do. You know, I just think that, you know, we know the township, the county is not going to come and help us. They're not. You know, we sit there and say, you know, there's, you know, we can spider nose in the face, right? All that, the old saying. It's up to the board ultimately if they want to go through and try to keep, keeping things moving and keeping the roads in better shape. If not, then that's fine.
So Sam, what you're saying is, is that you believe that once the gravel's put on there, one rain, and it just pretty much washes away.
Well, depending on the topography of the road, it is. What I'm saying is, if I was going to be on board with spending money anymore with this county, which I'm getting fed up with, is I'd say, let's get 50 grand, let's get a mile and a half a road, let's, we don't need to do a mile and a half a road. We need to do a quarter of a mile here where it's really bad over by Michigamy or something. We need a quarter mile over here by Deer Hill. We need to do a quarter mile, you know, we need to, we're talking tonnage. We need to put some tons over here. We need to put some tons over here. We need to put those tons over here. I don't see a value in just doing a strip of road in the middle of nowhere every seven or 10 years for no reason. If we could make it, if we could take advantage of that tonnage and place it where we want to, to benefit the residents, then it's kind of like, you know, we're doing a patch, because this isn't paving. This is, it may could be gone tomorrow with a heavy rain. I mean, you know, I mean, so it's, there's no guarantee that what they're doing is, is going to stay as a repair on the road, but I would be in favor of, if we're going to, if we want to contribute something, it should be very targeted and not by long stretches, but by sections that are in need of repair. If we're going to bail the county out on more of their road repairs, that would be my, my suggestion.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, and I would, I, I like where you're going with that, because you're truly focusing on the areas that, that need it, rather than just a kind of a rote exercise of dropping gravel A to Z, doing your mile and a half run, calling it a day, right? Move on to your next township versus more of a proactive approach, just like when you call to get a pothole filled with hot patch, you're not putting hot patch on the whole road. You're putting it on the area that needs it. And so to that end, and with finite amount of dollars at the county level and certainly at the township level, I think if we can get the county to agree to something like that, I think it is more palatable, because we.
Yeah, remember, I'm sorry. The Road Commission is, is not part of the county, right? It's a separate entity, just, just as a clarification point. That may be changing in the very near future, but right now, they're a separate governing body, just to keep that clear. I did ask, that's why I did ask for the rates, you know, for them to rate the roads from a condition standpoint. I did not get to the point of saying, maybe we'd only do 300 yards of it, but I can absolutely go back and say, you know, does that impact things? Because obviously, if they're doing smaller runs, it's a little bit more expensive to move to another location, so on and so forth. I don't know if that will impact the price, but I'll be more than happy to ask.
Just to clarify, you are correct that they are their own governing body, but they are, the commissioners are appointed by the county executive, and they don't have separate taxing, do they have separate taxing jurisdiction? How do they get their funding?
So it goes to the state. So the state is, controls.
Yeah, through the, yeah, pub, I forget the Public Act.
Yeah.
There is the three buckets, if you will, but, yeah.
So it's, it's a weird little animal, right?
If I remember right, I think when they came and talked to us, they talked about their plan, and I don't think it's just willy-nilly and just drop it where they go. I think it's part of building up and sort of like a master plan. So I think it might be beneficial if we have someone come from the Road Commission, and we discuss this at another meeting, and they can talk more into what their plan is, because I think that was beneficial. I mean, if I do remember, it's part of building it up, and it gives them more of the longevity where they're not going back. And that's why they can say, we've, we've done this road on this year, this year, and this year, and that's why they're alternating. And yes, there's some times that some are worse than others, and they'll maybe redirect their plan for the year, but I think it's part of their big picture, and I think it's worth us hearing it again as a board because we have some new members, so.
I just want to make a quick comment. When they did our road last year, Stickney, not my road, but side street, you know, they were back out this year dumping gravel because it was so tore up from that torrential rain storm that we got, you know, earlier this year. So it was last year's project. It did not slow them down one bit to come out with gravel and re-gravel and fill everything in and regrade it again. So I'm, I think they do a good job on their own without us, you know what I'm saying? Like, if the roads tore up, they come out and fix it. They do a decent job. I mean, for, I mean, I'm not going to, you know, I understand the complexity and the problems with maintaining dirt roads, but I think they do a decent job, so I think they're going to take care of us without oversubsidizing them, so I keep it minimum, because I think they, if roads are bad, they come out and fix them. It's just their routine. That's what they, what they do. They're just trying to get a little extra, little extra buildup, you know?
So I know such little roads they haven't been on in years, but that's okay, too.
Well, maybe I'm on a school route or a bus route, you know what I mean? So that's going to probably play into it.
Are we up against a timeframe?
We are. Actually, we're late, but I think if we want to get it on for the next one, I can definitely get them out here and, and try to do it. We're, we'll be late on late, but at this point, I don't know if it'll be that big of a difference.
So should we just take no action?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
So I would think we would do that for number seven as well?
Yeah, you might as well. If we're going to get them out here, we might as well get them out here to discuss both.
Well, numbers, that's a different animal, but I'm fine with that, because that is township-wide, the calcium chloride.
It is township-wide.
So that's just so many applications per year. I think we get five or six now. And we wanted to try to get more, and they didn't have the resources, I think, at the time that we asked them, because that is another thing that you could, calcium chloride, one day it rains really bad, and then it's gone, so.
Well, you know what, let's, let's actually just bring it up. So item seven is dealing with the quote and waive the procurement policy. So let's first take it on, is it something that we would want to advance? And if so, then we ought to look for a waiver on the procurement policy because of the fact that we're looking at a single vendor instead of putting it out to bid. So, you know, and it's not on here, so I guess we have to make a motion to amend the agenda to include, nope.
It's part of the motion.
It is part of the motion. Okay, good.
It's all in there.
Nice.
But I'm in favor of moving forward with the calcium chloride program, because it's township-wide, and it's at the maximum that they'll allow us to do.
Good. Is there, anyone else have any other comments on this? All right.
Terry does.
I'm sorry, Terry.
That's okay. If, if this is part of their program, though, on a regular basis, and they do it without our money, I still think we should look back at why we keep giving them money for it. Is it because they just are running out of budget like the other ones? I get what we're saying, but if, if they're both from the same RCOC, I think have them out here to talk about both before we do anything.
I'm not sure they give us calcium chloride as a service at all on their own.
Well, that's, that's my question.
Do they?
Yeah, the RCOC does.
No, I'm saying, if we didn't pay them, I don't think they give us any. We're not, it's not five additional. I think it's five seasonal, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, it's five seasonal.
It's an additional thing that they provide, whether, if you want to pay for it or not, because they're not calcium chloriding every road in the county that's hurt.
That's what I'm saying. This is a service that we do for the residents, so they can go outside in the summertime, but it's not something that, if we didn't do it, they would do it for us. I don't believe that's the case.
But if you want to wait, Terry, I'm good with that. Just tell me how you want to make the motion.
That's fine. If, if this is a bonus, and we're, we're okay paying for a bonus, that's fine. So I'll move to accept the quote received from the Road Commission for Oakland County to provide 2025 road chloride services for township gravel roads, which includes five applications and an amount not to exceed $66,655, and waive the township's procurement, petty cash, and credit card policy, Section 3, standards for procurement, 3.2, procurement procedures, P-3 purchases and contracts from $10,001 and up, requiring comparative price quotations.
Second.
No, just a.
I want to interrupt for a second. I wanted to make sure, are we saying that we're okay with this for private and public roads?
No, this is only for public roads. We had a legal opinion back in 2017 from Johnson, Rosati, Schultz, and Jopich that says that taxpayers' money cannot be used on private roads. So this is only going to be for public roads.
They'll amend the motion to include that?
Sure.
Can I ask a question, since we're doing questions? As this.
This is about the motion, though.
Yeah, it's about, that you made the motion that, never mind, go ahead.
Okay.
I'm going to let it go.
So can I get a second, then?
Yeah, a second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, so just to recap on that, we are going to move forward with the calcium chloride, and we are tabling the, or whatever it's called, the.
No action.
No action on the gravel. Okay. Okay, at this time, can I get a motion to go into closed session?
Make a motion to enter into closed session to discuss a written legal opinion regarding the 2025-2027 law enforcement services agreement pursuant to MCL 15.268H and MCL 15.243G.
Support. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed?
I need roll call, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, roll call.
Trustee Hayward?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Almatru?
Yes.
Trustee Tetter?
Yes.
Supervisor File?
Yes.
Clerk Newbeck, yes, and it is 7:44. Thank you, sorry.
That's all right. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to return from closed session and resume the regular meeting at 8:21 PM.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Uh, where we at? Communication, future agenda items. We have a report fiscal 2025, actual to budget comments period ending March 31st, 2025. Thank you for the whalers. It's a little tough to talk. Uh, report fire department, monthly report January 2025, building department activity report March 2025, Walter Lake Improvement Board September 18th, 2024, state of Michigan audit foster care facility. Any board member comments?
I wish everyone happy Easter. We won't meet again after Easter.
Yeah, happy Easter.
Same, happy Easter.
Great. Happy Easter, everybody. Anybody else?
I just want to wish Jim Tetter and his wife a happy anniversary.
Uh, thank you.
Hopefully there'll be more.
I invited her, you know, to
To come tonight and
Hang out with me, but she's, she's not a board, you know, meeting kind of gal.
I don't blame her, so I'm gonna move to adjourn so you can get home. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? motion, okay.
You like that.